We'll be starting in a few minutes. Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I asked for person, you know, personal preference to warm with its blowing on the board is too much.
It's really warm.
Okay, I'm turning it off.
Thank you. I appreciate that, ma'am. Thank you.
It feels the exact same temperature. It's reading the same temperature. It always does.
Is this the updated? No, did you give me? This is the updated. Is this your? It says new on it. You're, I don't think you need it. Your, yours is in, in there.
Mine has.
So it must have been a second batch that was printed. There's thirty seven items.
Okay.
Yes, so you have.
No, I, I think she said mine's on here. And I'm just gonna get my.
That it was against the fire.
What I'm saying.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Seventy three, so it's good.
Thank you, Alex.
Running a few minutes behind. Thank you.
What time is it? It's ten thirty.
Thirty, so it's. I think the recording starts a little earlier than the meeting, so it's ten thirty now. Meru may have a tissue.
Yes.
Make a couple of just.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, head. Yes, it is. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Nick, how are you?
I, I'll put it with your backup. Thank you. Thank you, Gary.
That's what's going on.
Ten thirty, we, we should. If one's not in here in time, then. Yeah, we. Think he's trying to get me.
I think he's showing them the property damage.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I wanted to show you. You guys didn't, I might have. I'm not gonna say anything to influence you.
I don't wanna know.
Huh?
I don't wanna know. Probably against the sunshine law, I don't wanna.
No, it's giving you information from ODOT.
I don't want it.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
Thank you.
Oh. Diane, Mike. Would you like to see this before the meeting? I think you should. It's an email from ODOT. No, it came this morning. Yeah. I don't wanna give it to you because it's my only copy, copy. Okay, so basically, a draft is required. Okay.
All right, good morning, everybody. We're gonna try to conduct this meeting. Uh, we just had a little outbreak from one of our commissioners decided to take a hammer to the plexiglass here and, uh, take her aggression out on a piece of plastic that's county property after she was told not to. So that's what the deputies in the hallway are there for, to, uh, they're handling their thing. We had a police report this morning from some criminal damaging that was done on the podium last night. And we're here now. Uh, she just did it again in front of all of you. We're all witnesses to the rage and destruction of county property here. So we'll let the deputy sort their thing out. We'll try to conduct a professional meeting. Yeah, if it does not go as planned in a professional way, um, then I'll be forced to suspend the meeting at that time, but we'll try to move on with a professional meeting. Okay, if everybody could please rise, we have an invocation, uh, by Reverend Whitestone of Higher Praise Church, but first, we're gonna start with our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
And to your republic, for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have, uh, Reverend Whitestone of Higher Praise Church.
Let's pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day that you've made for us to be productive in business. We pray for divine wisdom and counsel for this commission. We ask you for foresight and insight for the business at hand. I ask you to release a spirit of cooperation and collaboration in this place, Father. And most of all, release your peace. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. French Co.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one, to dispense with reading the minutes of the regular meeting dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and approve them as distributed and printed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co. Item number two, to approve the bills.
Motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number three, to transfer monies.
Motion to transfer monies is listed.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes, and thank you to the sanitary engineers department for explaining those.
Item number four, to approve decreasing appropriations.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
No.
Item number five, to approve additional appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number six, to transfer appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Um, because the departments and offices didn't send any explanations, uh, no.
Item number seven, to re, uh, receive the amended certificate of the county budget commission, number five, twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
I'm gonna read number eight. I'm gonna make a motion.
To, to adopt a resolution to declare the name of the Warren Sharon Road Bridge, number ten, SFN seven, eight, three, six, two, three, six, located in Brookfield Township, Ohio, to the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Bridge in honor of Marine Lance Corporal MacArthur Coleman, Army Private First Class Paul E. Good, and Army Staff Sergeant Martin Walker, Jr. The bridge name change was requested by the Trumbull County Engineer in conjunction with a resolution passed by the Brookfield Township Trustees, Brookfield, Ohio, on December fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Item number nine, to grant the right-of-way permits requested from Idronka, um, Valesty. Uh, we have Freed Freeman Forestry and Land Management LLC and Village Energy Cooperative Association.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number ten, to grant the special annual supplier fleet permits, Jesweld Auto Truck Service and Kryptonic, Kryptonic, uh, Excavating LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number eleven, to haul steel coils over Trumbull County roadways, and that's with Jaro Transportation Services Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twelve, to acknowledge receipt of the proposal for the TRU TR oh nine five A Layer Road Bridge Replacement, uh, which consists of the replacement of the Warren Number One Bridge on Layer Road, TH ninety-five A in Warren Township, and authorize the clerk of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to advertise for sale bids for the TRU TR zero nine five A Layer Bridge, uh, replacement project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
This, Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Uh, item number thirteen, to receive and place on file the monthly activities report for the Trumbull County Dog Kennel for the month of March twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, to authorize the clerk to advertise for requests for qualifications, RFQ statements from professional engineering firms in accordance with the Trumbull County Uniform Guideline Procurement Policy for American Rescue Plan Act Funds, Part VC one dash eight, for the purpose of conducting certain studies and reports required by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for five properties found to be non-compliant with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program in accordance with the Trumbull County Special Purpose Flood Damage Reduction Regulations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
I, I just wanna say, good job
Yes or no?
to the Planning Commission, um, for putting, uh, this together. It's the first time this has ever happened, uh, to do an RFP in this way for this type of purpose, and I'm glad that the, um, board voted yes to look into this for the people in this area, um, who are affected. Yes.
Item number fifteen, to authorize and award an execution of an agreement with MS Consultants, Incorporated, uh, the most qualified engineering forums firm selected to provide professional engineering and limited construction administration services for the Golden Triangle Infrastructure Improvement Project. The Planning Commission is requesting that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners authorize the word and execution of an agreement with MS Consultants, uh, engineering firm to provide professional engineering and limited construction administration services for the Golden Triangle Infrastructure Improvement Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, to authorize the request for price proposals for the home sewage treatment system of four installers for the West Farmington Sanitary Sewer Project Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program. Uh, the Planning Commission is requesting that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, is a request to authorize Ms. Emily Moran, Grants Coordinator, Trumbull County Planning Commission, to request price proposals from three or more of Trumbull County's licensed home sewage treatment system, HSTS installers for the West Farmington Sanitary Sewer Project Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program, SLAP, for the, uh, connection, excuse me, of three additional low and moderate income households, uh, to the newly constructed sanitary sewer in West Farmington Village. Uh, the price proposal is to be paid through the county's PY twenty twenty-one Community Development Block Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Um, may I please say, uh, point of personal privilege that I'm very warm, um, Ms. French Co. with the heat. If your heater, is it on? Blowing, I, it's, it's very warm. I'm s-
Very hot.
It's, I, it's seventy-three. It's just, it's, it's warm because it hits this wall, and I thank you. I appreciate it. Um, item number seventeen, to approve the renewal proposal and execute the participation agreement as submitted by Rossi Insurance and the Trumbull County Independent Insurance Agencies from the County Risk Sharing Authority, Corsa, uh, for general liability, property damage, law enforcement liability, and fleet insurance coverage for a period of one year commencing May first, twenty twenty-three, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-two fees totaled five hundred ninety-three thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars. Total for this agreement would be seven hundred twenty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-one dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number eighteen, to receive and place on file the twenty twenty-two annual report for the Trumbull County Juvenile Court, as submitted by, uh, Juvenile Court Administrator Stacy Ziska.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Uh, item number nineteen, to approve the personnel action for the full-time employment of Kayla Roof, uh, as a telecommunicator with the Trumbull County nine-one-one center, effective Monday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Ms. Roof will be paid twenty-two point one nine four per hour and serve a hundred and eighty-day probationary period.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I, I have a, a question. This is something that I just thought of. I'm sorry for not asking it yesterday. Um, is this a, uh, situation where someone's coming in with time from outside that would create more of those, uh, past practice things that were issues in other unions?
Good morning, Alex, Human Resources Department, uh, Commissioner. This is not one of those scenarios. So in the OPBA, I am so sorry, this, in the OPBA nine-one-one contract, they can enter in at eighteen. They can enter in at eighteen.
You wanna speak?
We can hear you. Yeah, we could. They can enter in at eighteen or go up to twenty-one, depending on previous years of experience. So this is actually in their CBA, written as such. So they do have the discretion to do that. The specific candidate has comes to us with five years of Mahoning County dispatch experience. So this is something that we want, and we wanna encourage in the county, which is why we're willing to hide, to pay, to bring in at the higher level. Okay.
Thank you. I just, I'm familiar with the issues with the, yes, the other unions, so.
Yeah, no, this is truly one that's exempt from that because this is in their contract, that they can bring in from eighteen to twenty-one based off of years of service, so.
Thank you. I appreciate.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty, to approve addendum number one to the existing agreement between the Trumbull County Commissioners Council for, uh, Village of Lordstown and Altium Cells LLC that was approved on December seventh, twenty twenty. Uh, per Journal Volume one fifty-two, page two, three, six, two, zero. Addendum clarifies that the Village of Lordstown shall bill, uh, Altium based upon the actual sanitary, uh, sewer meter reading and not through a water meter reading. All other provisions contained in the agreement for sewer services for Altium Cells shall remain enforceable in accordance with the original agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Only because I didn't received any explanation for, um, them getting billed in a more favorable way than other, uh, communities, or the other people in the community, um, I have to vote no, so.
This was explained in detail at the public meeting yesterday by Gary Newbrow, where we made sure that all three parties, Altiums, Village Lordstown, and us were in agreement, and they all understood the thing. I wish you would have been at the meeting again. Something you missed, and now you're wasting time by bringing it up again in this meeting.
Uh, I'd like to.
Next item.
No, I'm, I'm responding, I'm responding to that. Um, it's not enough for me just to have an employee give a report. Um, if we have an attorney, I like to see a memory of a blah. If we have a proposal, I wanna see past billing and, uh, some type of an executive report relative to the reason that they, what the differences would be with the billing, and none of that was included in my packet. I like to review things in, in, in writing and in a report form. I had nothing like that. Thank you.
Item number twenty-one, to authorize payment to the Direction Home of Eastern Ohio Incorporated for local match dollars as obtained from Trumbull, Mahoning, Columbiana, and Ashabula Counties for Title III federal funding under the Older Americans Act to provide critical services for older adults such as home-delivered meals and home assistance and other supportive services to be rendered for FY twenty twenty-three. Um, it's like one thousand two hundred fifty dollars will be paid quarterly for a total amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, to amend item, uh, agenda item dated November ninth, twenty twenty-two, Journal Volume, uh, one fifty-five, page two, five, one, eight, zero, and committing two hundred thousand from sales tax fund, uh, to match fifty-three-ten grant funds used to provide countywide on-demand transportation for Trumbull County disabled residents under sixty years of age, beginning December first, twenty twenty-two, through November thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-four. Amendment is necessary to include the following: to remove the language "under sixty years of age" and to correct the sales, that, um, sales tax fund number.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, to adopt a resolution to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute the Ohio Department of Transportation contracts for the purpose of authorizing ODOT to remove former Commissioner Frank S. Fuda from their files as the authorized signatory of contracts on behalf of Trumbull County.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, per ODOT fifty-three-ten program requirements for contracted services, sub-recipient compliance, the following policies are to be adopted by the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners as prepared by Mike Salamoni, Transit Administrator, and Diane Siskelik, Drakovik Senior Levy Administrator. From ODOT drafted policies, approval has been obtained by all involved Trumbull County Departments pertaining to any policies as presented. The following policies from the Trumbull County Transit Fifty-three-ten Program are: financial management policies and procedures, FTA compliant procurement policy, ADA policy, and, uh, Title VI plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
I, I also think that the Trumbull County should look into having the same types of policies that the federal government has, because these are good. So, yes.
Item number twenty-five.
On, on item number twenty-five, based on an email from ODOT, we have to approve this as a draft because the actual agreement ha, can't be prepared unless, until they receive, uh, the verification of number twenty-three. So if we could, uh, amend this writing to say to, um, approve, authorize the award and execution of a draft agreement, um, per proposal submitted on March fifteenth by the four companies listed below, that would, um, be in compliant with their, um, with their checklist. So, I'm just, I, I would just like to add the word draft, because then, after that, we'll, next week, we can have the actual contract. And here's the, here's the email that says that the, um, Commissioners shouldn't, uh, should be meeting to approve the draft agreements. So right now, it's a draft, and this is how it should be written. If we approve an agreement that hasn't been actually, uh, drawn up yet with our, we, there could be like a finding where we'd have to pay it back if we continue, because I will absolutely report it if we do it wrong.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
It, does any, you guys just read a copy of this, right? Did, does anyone wanna speak to the email that it says that we need to approve a draft before we approve the actual agreement? Yes. So we have to approve it as a draft because we don't have a. It's not the Planning Commission, and it's a different funding source. This is ODOT. It, it hasn't been generated yet. I just wanna explain that, that.
Can we move on, please?
It's, it can't be generated until the resolution.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Ohio receives the, the resolution changing the signatory.
Can you read the, uh, agenda item as written?
Okay.
Item number twenty-five, to authorize the award and execution of agreements per proposal submitted on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, by the four companies listed below for purchase transportation to provide on-demand service for Trumbull County residents using the Trumbull Countywide Transportation Service for disabled and/or residents sixty years of age and older. Funding available, May one, twenty twenty-three. Funding available May one, two thousand and twenty-three through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Totals, two thousand and twenty-three program year, section fifty-three-ten grant, five hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars plus one million, one hundred thousand local share reduced by transportation costs expended during December one, two thousand and twenty-two through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, for approximately one million, one hundred sixty-five thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine dollars. And year two, beginning December one, two thousand and twenty-three through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, service contracts of one million, one hundred from local funding with increases possible dependent upon securing additional funding such as federal and/or state grant funds, fifty-three-ten funds. The contract period shall be an initial of nineteen months from the effective date. The contract is eligible for nineteen months with possible one-year renewal if mutually agreeable to the agency and the contractors unless terminated. The dollars available for year one are from the following sources. The remaining balances of local funds expended, uh, December one, two thousand and twenty-two through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three from original annual, uh, commit, commitments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is the award, that one of the bidders didn't?
That was discussed in a prosecutor's opinion.
So my, what, so I'm asking on the propos, the proposals awarded, does that reflect a change in the bid amount?
Thank you.
I see that, but I also see from ODOT that it says it's, it was our recommendation that the vendor is not allowed to change his bid and can choose to enter another. So that's. Okay. Okay. It's just, it's conflicting with what ODOT said, so.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Because this is not approving at a draft and the draft needs to come first before you're executing a document that actually doesn't exist because they need resolution from number twenty-three first to prepare it. No. It should have waited a week.
Item number twenty-six, uh, to notify the Ohio Department of Liquor Control that a public hearing is not requested. And this is a liquor license, uh, from a K Nafa Restaurant to Sam Shop Convenience Store LLC.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sir Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
I'll read items twenty-seven through thirty, the three fiscal officer certificates support the resolution, resolution for number thirty. To read them in their entirety. So item number twenty-seven is to receive the fiscal officer certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with the proposed issue of notes and a principal amount not to exceed three hundred ninety million. Is that million? Let me see here. Thousand, sorry. I had to look at the totals. They have to equal resolution. Thank you. Uh, the notes to be issued in anticipation, anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of expanding and improving the water system in the county, including but not limited to the Prosperity Waterline Project, known as County Project Number Five, W fifteen, and pay issuance cost all in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty-eight, to receive the fiscal officer certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with the proposed issue, uh, of notes and the principal amount not to exceed six hundred thousand. The notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of expanding and improving the sanitary sewage in the county, including but not limited to the Brookfield Wastewater Treatment Plant, that should say, uh, project and pay issuance cost, all in connection therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Uh, item twenty-nine, to receive the fiscal officer certificate as signed by the Trumbull County Auditor in connection with the proposed issue of notes and the principal amount not to exceed two hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred. The notes to be issued in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of expanding and improving the sanitary sewage in the county, uh, including but not limited to the Elm Road, uh, water, the Elm Water Project and pay issuance cost all in connection with therewith.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
And item thirty, a resolution providing for the issue ends of, and sale of notes in anticipation of the issuance of general obligation bonds in a principal amount not to exceed one million, two hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the purposes of retiring outstanding bond anticipation notes issued in two thousand and twenty-two for various purposes and be paying issuance cost of the notes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, item thirty-one is to rescind agenda item dated April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, volume one fifty-six, page two-five-six, one-nine-dash-two-five-six-two-zero, to adopt a resolution to maintain, uh, the record of proceedings for the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners by electronic means, rescinding the agenda item requested for the following reasons. Uh, number one, to amend the Commissioner's record and retention schedule, that'd be our, uh, RC two, to include adopting resolution to maintain the record of proceedings by electronic means that will be kept as a permanent record. Two, the President of the Board will be responsible for announcing that the record is being maintained in such a manner and during the proceeding shall ensure that each person self-identifies prior to speaking during the proceedings every time when speaking according to RC three zero five, uh, zero, uh, point oh-nine-three. Uh, number three, the public cannot easily access a copy of the minutes and may not have a computer or internet access.
Motion to rescind, uh, agenda item dated April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three to maintain records of proceedings for Trumbull County Board of Commissioners by electronic means. Uh, the reasons for that are that, uh, amen are that we need to, uh, amend our retention, records retention schedules. Uh, and that the President of the Board will be responsible for making sure that everyone who speaks at a meeting announces their name uh, before speaking throughout the meeting. And there are a lot of people in Trumbull County who don't have access to the internet or computers. Uh, so accessing the meeting minutes and fulfilling public records requests would become incredibly cumbersome. And I have to state that I really believe that it was a good idea to try to become compliant. But at the same time, after reflection and additional research, I realized it's not as easy as, um, they anticipated it would be just to keep the recordings in lieu of minutes.
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Item number thirty-two, it's authorizing participation in a sublease purchase arrangement with the Ohio Secretary of State for the purpose of acquiring and implementing voting machines and equipment in financing certain costs thereof and sublease purchase agreement evidencing such arrangement and matters related thereto attached. So this is a very, uh, long resolution to, uh, support, uh, Board of Elections had some grant funds, I believe, left over for purchasing equipment and this resolution is needed for them to use the funds.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
So wait, so everyone buys number thirty-three. Thank you. Uh, item number thirty-three is to rescind agenda item dated March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, volume one fifty-six, page two-four-four-seven-six, to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trumbull County, the open-end equity lease rate quote as submitted by Enterprise Fleet Management. This is necessary to be rescinded because, uh, they cannot, no longer, the window, uh, for the lease of the vehicles has closed prior to the lease agreement being signed and returned.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and I'd like to make a, a motion from the floor to commit. Hope I have the number right. Uh, I make, make a motion to commit eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I believe is the right number. I'll have to ask Gary Newbraw, um, for the Scott Street uh, sanitary project that's under a consent decree uh, for the purpose of keeping the project moving forward and not losing the three million dollars and, and available right now.
Commissioner, that was discussed yesterday. We've already forwarded it to our attorney. We need to get the attorney's approval and then we can move on it.
Uh, but I, I understand that it was not discussed with a dollar amount associated with it. And I want to make sure that there's, uh, an amount to make sure that the.
It was a dollar amount discussed. It was nine hundred thousand dollars.
It wa, that was agreed upon for certain.
That was agreed upon to send to our legal counsel, correct?
And that's the other thing is on.
Want to walk away from the project for fifty thousand dollars, you might as well. Go ahead.
Um, but the, the other issue is that when you have the agenda for the workshop and there is nothing on the workshop agenda that says that there is any ARPA discussion or.
Was in public comment, Commissioner.
There's no, nothing on our, on the agenda for the work session that says public comment either.
Again, we have public comment at work sessions. That's customary. We've always done it.
Is it on, it's customary. We've always done it, but it's not on the.
So do other counties.
So do other counties. And it's when we pass our, um, all, all of our stuff at the beginning of the year, we talk about public comment in our meetings. It's part of the Roberts Rule of Order too. We, we accept that in all our meetings.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's understood that that is an important project and, um.
We discussed it yesterday. We sure did. We know how important it is.
You do, but it, I've, I've received some calls from people who didn't seem to, uh, think that the both of you understood the consent decrees and how they are. So, thank you.
Okay, item number thirty-four, to adopt a resolution for record purposes for the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to hold a special meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. at the Trumbull County Agriculture and Family Education Center. That's at five-twenty West Main Street, Cortland, Ohio, four-four-four-one-oh. Uh, the special meeting will be to discuss pending and future American Rescue Plan Act ARPA applications with applicants, the public, and the press, and to discuss any ARPA-related matters.
Um, I've, are the Boy Scouts going to be dislocated for that?
They are not, they don't meet there anymore.
It's a motion and I'll make a second for discussion.
Just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Frenchco.
Wait, discussion?
I, I, well, if she's speaking, then she's automatically making a motion. I just wanted to second it.
Okay, now I'll second it too in case we needed to. Um, but in discussion in this also, uh, thank you, Ed Agler, for making this possible. The Boy Scouts do not meet there. They stopped meeting there uh, months ago and the building is open. We're having this meeting in an effort to reach out to all citizens of Trumbull County. We have a special meeting here in this room next Tuesday at one-thirty to discuss pending and future ARPA funds. Any ARPA questions are on the table for that special meeting. Whether you want to have help applying for it or see where your status is of an application that's already submitted. That'll be at one-thirty Tuesday in this room, um, the, uh, April twenty-fifth. And then April twenty-sixth at six P M. at the Ag Center. And that was in hopes that people that work during the day, they can't be here Tuesday, whether they're trustees or fiscal officers from a township or citizens. There's two options for them to come and meet. So we're going to give them our time to have the two meetings to make sure we try to reach everybody. And everyone has an equal and fair opportunity to come and have their ARPA request questions answered and their grants, uh, processed through or at least submitted in the correct way. So I encourage and hope that all three Commissioners will be there for that a, as we invited also our attorney, uh, to one of them that approves these things and sends them back to us. And, uh, Mr. Masaki, who is our, uh, special coordinator in charge of this here. So we should be able to to answer a lot of the questions that people have out there and make the process easier for those with questions. The other thing at the meeting that was discussed prior is the townships, the rural communities, um, the funding, and then we can delineate that time the three qualif, qualifying factors for ARPA, how much money has been spent, how much money is remaining? And then hopefully set some guidelines of a, uh, priority list on where we're going to spend the remaining funds. So it's, it's spent as responsible as possible and so that everybody in the county gets a fair shake at getting some of the money for their community uh, equally with the rest of the, the, the benefactors have already received that money. So again, I encourage all three Commissioners to be there, um, so that the public will have a chance to do this. And we equally can have a say in where the rest of that money gets spent.
Is, is, um, if this is arranged, normally we have Commissioner, if we have Commissioners meetings in the evenings, we have them here. Uh, security will stay later.
We will have security and we have the phone lines being installed there so we can do it publicly. Where, uh, uh, Auditor Yoder is making it possible so that we will be able to be um, live on there with the, uh, recorded. So the people that can't be there can hear the meeting also.
Okay, so do we have the, we, we have the contention upon, I want to make this motion contingent upon making, making sure that, uh, those things happen, that we are able to have the live. And I thank you, Auditor, for working with IT to get that done. And, uh, contingent upon security being there. So I want to amend that.
Probably extra security.
Good. So, I mean.
Yeah. Don't entertain a motion regarding that? Or we did that?
You, you responded, so that's a second. So. Hey, so since he, so he spoke, that would be an automatic second.
Miss, I, I don't know why we can't just vote on the, as it's, as it's written.
Ms. Frenchco for amending.
Strange.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
So you're making, okay.
Yeah, what, security and.
IT.
Auditor Yoder.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cancel Mesa.
I'd like to hear what Auditor Yoder has to say first.
I just want to clarify because we did talk after, but we do not have the county phone system at the Ag Building. We are working on trying to make sure that we get that, but that's a very short timeline. So I don't want to make, because you're making it contingent on that. I want to be very careful and saying we're doing our best to make sure that we have that live for everybody. But it's because we don't have a phone out there right now and we're in a short timeline. I can't make that promise. I said, as I said to you yesterday, we're doing the best that we can and we are working on it, but there's still a, a chance that you might not have it live.
Okay, so I want to strike that contingency just in case. Thank you.
Contingent upon security for the record. Okay, thank you. So I'll read the rule against, uh, Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Mr. Cantal Mesa.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, item thirty-five, to authorize the comprehensive settlement agreement and release of all claims in the case of Joshua Geisinger versus Paul Monroe at all, United States District Court, for the Northern District of Ohio Case Number of four-two-two, CB zero-one-four-nine-nine, and to authorize Denny Malloy, President of the Trumbull County Board of Commissioners, to execute this document.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirty-six, to acknowledge receipt of the agreement proposal between the Trumbull County Engineer and the Shelley Company for the hauling of asphalt grindings, uh, free of charge from the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, project in Portage County, ODOT, ODOT has offered the Trumbull County Engineer, uh, eight thousand, three hundred, CY, uh, that's sixteen thousand, six hundred tons of asphalt grindings which are valued at eighteen dollars and fifty cents a ton or three hundred, seven thousand, one hundred dollars. The Trumbull County Engineer will have twenty trucks hauling this. The Trumbull County Engineer will have twenty trucks hauling this material, which will be incorporated into Trumbull County Roads and Future Projects.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Yes.
Item number thirty-seven, to designate Ms. Amy Shannon to serve as a representative for Denny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners on the Family and Children First Council for the term commencing April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three and ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one two one point three seven. The President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners is a mandated member of the Family and Children First Council.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantalas Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. French Co.
Only because I think that the President of the Board should value his position on the Family and Children's First Council and that we shouldn't take a brand new employee who's just in training and send them because he doesn't want to go to a meeting now.
Would you like to go and represent instead, Commissioner? There's a meeting tomorrow morning at eight thirty. If you can be there, you can represent instead. We can retract.
Commissioner, you haven't been to a planning commission meeting in two years.
Right, right. You have designated it goes to every planning commission meeting.
Stop.
Women, but but it's the family and children first, just.
Planning Commission isn't important.
Take note of that.
There are two other meetings tomorrow that I'm responsible to be at that that there's a conflict. And that's why I'm not going. And I would gladly do it, but you don't go to any meetings. So we didn't waste our breath until asking you.
Night about the annexation until eight o'clock. I mean, I I go all over. Okay, sure.
Yeah, that concludes our regular business.
I I want to make a motion from the floor to I make a motion from the floor to eliminate benefits, health insurance benefits from any employee in Trumbull County not working at least thirty hours a week pursuant to Trumbull County Policy and Procedure Manual. The purpose of this is to come into compliance and address a management letter finding from the state auditor.
Motion dies for lack of a second. Anybody have anything for the greater good of Trumbull County from the floor?
Yes.
Please come forward.
Good morning to everyone.
Morning.
I'm here to put on.
Put your name, please.
My name.
Yes, your name and where you're from.
My name is Shelley, S H E L L I, last name Jackson, J A C K S O N. And this to put on record about the Stark County Law Library and how vital their services are to not just the county, but also to Warren City. On Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, they had a workshop with free attorneys giving advice to those who needed to expunge their criminal record. The people who came in had a look of despair. They had a look of shame. But when they left after receiving the free services, because everyone cannot pay three hundred and seventy-five dollars regardless of if it's a criminal record or not. But sitting there trying to complete my research paper on a community agency here, um, I was thankful that the Director Tara Keating had a vision. And by that vision, people in this community were helped. It wasn't based on race. It wasn't based on religious doctrine. It was based on a whole community needing assistance. So I just wanted to make sure that it was on record of the phenomenal job that was done that day for this community. Thank you so much.
And and just absolutely. And just to talk about, this is a small, very small portion of what we do here, but they we house the lot, obviously. It's a county building. I know those steps when you go in are deplorable when you when you walk in. We're getting those steps fixed, too. So.
You can't walk in that way. You have to walk in the side because the security is on the side. There's no entrance on the front of the building, just so you know.
Okay. Steps will be fixed, whether it be useful or or just for aesthetic purposes.
Yeah.
Anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
Thank you again for giving me a moment here. My name is Mike Peterson. I'm with the on the Board of Directors of the Ivy Hill Bazetta Condominium Association here in Trumbull County. What I wanted to do was to just say that, and I'll just read my first paragraph here. The Board of Directors of Ivy Hill Bazetta Condominium Association want the Trumbull County Commissioners to be aware of the very real potential negative impact to Ivy Hill Condominium Unit Owners, to Ivy Hill of Bazetta Condominium Association, to Bazetta Township, and to Trumbull County of proposed construction of self-storage units if it is permitted to proceed now at Ivy Hill and going forward at other places in the township or the county. Our two greatest concerns are the effect on property values and site flooding that has recurred due to site preparation. These are things we could not foresee. And again, I just want to make it aware at this county level that this is occurring. Anybody has a question at entertain it, but otherwise I appreciate your.
Is it going through the planning commission?
I'm sorry?
Has this gone through the planning commission?
It's going through.
It's going through right now? Is it satisfactory? Does it come? I want to ask Nick if he's familiar with the zoning, if it's it's all permissible or there's any sub any regulations that could be done to control the because the wa the water is a problem when you have them permeable surfaces of drain.
Director Green handled this directly with this gentleman yesterday, and I put Nick on the spot with this. I don't think you were part of that yesterday, Nick. So.
And I think Mr. Peterson just wanted to be on the record about this, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you.
And he did. Director Green did meet with him yesterday, I believe, after the meeting, or she she set up an arrangement for you to.
We tell the records. Yes, and I have I have the opportunity to research zoning records also. We're proceeding. We do have the assistance of legal counsel, so we're trying to work through the issue.
Shara, Julie Green is on the phone. Can she can you release it so she can be unmuted? And then hit star six, Ms. Green.
Hi, hi, Mr. Peterson. So, hi, so the the condominiums were developed, I believe, in the early seventies, correct? And the condominiums don't typically, they don't come under the planning commission. They're not part of our subdivision regulations. It's something that's regulated by the townships. However, we did do research to provide information to Mr. Peterson on when the zone changes occurred. That was a question he had, and I believe we found the answer to that yesterday where it was zoned residential initially and then changed to commercial in nineteen seventy-six. And it's my understanding that this piece of land, this parcel of land in question was zoned commercial at the time the gentleman purchased it. And he proceeded to contact the zoning official for a permit to construct these storage units on the site. And since it is an allowable use under that zoning for that parcel, you know, he proceeded to develop that. And at that time, I believe the trustees were made aware of it, and they proceeded to change the zoning for that particular area back to residential. However, since the gentleman who bought the property purchased it with the intent to construct this, they legally speaking, I'm not a lawyer, but it's my understanding that they, you know, the township could not change the zoning once an owner has already given notice of his intent on developing the property for a certain use. And so I've been working with a number of people with this organization over the last year since last summer, just pulling records from our database, whatever we have that might be of use to them. And, you know, our recommendation was to talk with a lawyer, especially if there's an ingress or egress easement that was recorded on that particular piece of land. And now it's obstructed, but I would think that that would, there would there would be some remedy to that potentially. But that's all the information I have, Mr. Peterson. Does that sound correct?
Yes, that's substantially what's occurring. So what we're doing is we're working through the issues. We're trying to identify, do we have opportunities or not? So it's all we can do at this point. Obviously, a person who owns a piece of property can do with that property as the owner wishes it within certain parameters, for example, public policy. Whether that applies in this case, we don't know. We're working on issues with our attorney, too. So, but again, primarily here to have this on record on a county level also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Much luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming back today, too, because this is the meeting that actually is recorded and goes onto our website.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, let's go to the phones. Phone lines are open. If you can hit star six and address yourself by name and where you're from.
I have a question.
What's your name and where are you from?
Uh, this is Amanda Aver, Warren, Ohio. Um, I just have a question about the situation with the previous gentleman. So there's a condo association upset that the property next door, it wants to build a storage unit. Is that what I understood?
Yes.
And the condo association has been using the county's time and resources to find ways to have a gentleman not build a storage unit?
No.
Is that correct?
Believe that's exactly what you know. He's just he's looking at his avenues of the legality of can they do it or not do it? The housing association doesn't like that it's doing it, so they're just expending all the resources, doing research to see if it's proper or not.
Anyone can contact the planning commission to find out information about how property is zoned. There's a there are comprehensive plans and they're the they're the entity that does those things for the county. So if anyone has, and and they do a lot of coordination, too. So if anyone has any questions, it's very common for people to contact the planning commission, whether it be for whether they want to have chickens, you know, that those are those are things that are governed by how things, how properties are zoned. So it it's it's actually not a waste of a resource. It's a use of a resources, resources a county provides by by having that planning commission. To explain.
That's interesting. Okay. Interesting. Thank you. That's I I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on the phone lines? Last chance, anybody else on the phone?
This is Julie Green again with Trumbull County Planning Commission, just to, you know, agree with Commissioner French Co. We do. We don't turn anybody away here. If somebody comes in and has a question on anything related to comprehensive planning or zoning, we accommodate them. We have files dating back to the nineteen seventies. Just to wanted to clarify, though, zoning is a local township-led. What's the what's the term I'm looking for? It's under the township's authority. They do go through this office to ask for our recommendation. However, it would ultimately be the townships to decide that have zoning, to decide whether or not they want to move forward with a zoning text amendment or a zoning map amendment. But we do have files dating back, permanent files because of our R C two dating back to the nineteen seventies when the County Planning Commission was established. That's one. And then two, I just want to remind everybody, I don't I don't know if it's too late, but if you've already registered tomorrow, the Community Legal Aid is having an eviction summit at Eastwood Event Center that will have a speaker to talk about, you know, the working poor and the problems we're having with evictions, either for renters or homeowners. And we'll have a number of social service agencies there to to discuss all of the challenges that we're facing here in the valley. So I think it'll be a a great event, a great learning event. And I encourage everybody to attend if if they're able. Again, I'm not sure what the cutoff is for the registration. I believe, I'm not sure if you can buy tickets at the door, but just wanted to mention that. It starts at eight A M. tomorrow at the Eastwood Event Center. Thank you.
Auditor Yoder?
They always have been, I'm sure.
There's. The video. On the on the on the.
We don't video.
Exactly. That's exactly because it doesn't. I understand that. I mentioned the you, yeah, there's a YouTube channel, and that's not, the only thing that's on our YouTube channel is the video.
No, you said the website.
Okay. I I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you again for your help. Anybody else on the phone lines? I want to remind people, our next public workshop is Tuesday, April twenty-fifth at ten A M. in this room. And the next regular meeting is Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, ten thirty in this room. We'll have a special meeting regarding ARPA at one thirty on Wednesday, April twenty-sixth, one thirty P M. in this room. And a special meeting now on April twenty-fifth at six P M. at the Trumbull County Agricultural Center in Cortland. The public is encouraged to attend. Those with A R P A funding requests or towns or trustees, fiscal officers or representatives of communities are encouraged to be their center representative if they have a pending ARPA grant or considering applying for some of the funds. And again, once again, I I encourage all three commissioners to be there. This is the time where we will do the most responsible thing we can and account for the money spent already and plan for the money to be spent in the future in as fair and equitably as we possibly can.
I'd like to see the agenda in advance. Do we have the agenda that was already set for the one that was announced last week?
There is a press release. Did you get a copy of the press releases?
Create an agenda for both meetings. The agenda, because the agenda has to, obviously, it has to be that I don't know if there's an intention to make decisions, then that needs to be listed on the agenda as well. There's not a discussion, then that's how it's going. It should be listed. So I just want to make sure that the.
Do we have someone on the phone lines? I heard someone clear their throat.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, sir. Name and where you're from.
My name is Paul Markle. I'm from Mecca, Ohio. And I was concerned about, I'm not really concerned, but thinking about the property where the R G Steel, W C I Steel Plant used to be, whether there's any plans on development or pursuit of such for that land.
So, Mr. Markle, after extensive work done by a lot of agencies and cleanup, we're aggressively marketing that that area there. And Nick can probably talk to it a little bit more, but that's a that's a enormous area of land there that we have, and we want to get site ready. And I I think that we're in some ways in the catbird seat because not a lot of communities have that 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 type of land that's ready to go and clean. not a lot of communities have that, that, that type of land that's ready to go and uh cleaned up and and with the utilities that are available. So uh, Nick, can you talk a little bit about that as well?
This is the commission. Uh, that site is active, uh, currently owned by the Western Reserve Port Authority, who is one of our economic development partners in Mahoning and Trumbull Counties. They are working in coordination with our office.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh. Might have to, you gotta speak into them. All right, can, can you hear me now?
No, I cannot hear you.
And uh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay, all right. Well, uh, so that site is currently owned by the Western Reserve Port Authority, who is one of our economic development partners. Uh, they work in Mahoning and Trumbull Counties. They're working with Jobs Ohio, which is the State Economic Development Office, Team Neo, our local um representative of Jobs Ohio, ourselves in the regional chamber and us, you know, Howland Township, Warren City, who that site sits across. Uh, but they are working actively and marketing it uh at their chambers annual meeting just last week. Uh, we have a record number of uh inquiries about mega sites, which this qualifies as a mega site under the the new law in Ohio Revised Code. They updated all of our economic development tools uh to account for mega sites. We've had more inquiries regarding that site than we have um for mega sites and mega projects than we have in the last ten years combined. So that site is being actively marketed, and we have a team of economic developments organizations working together with the local communities. So there, there is um hope that that will be moving forward um and very soon. And uh, we, again, we're going to continue to work with the state and all the local agencies to keep moving forward with that.
Did you hear that, sir?
Yes, I'll I'll be following it. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Anybody else? The only uh thing I would ask is that uh those of you that were here at the beginning of the meeting that may have witnessed what happened earlier, there's a deputy there. I would love for you to give a statement of what you witnessed also. I'll be giving my statement and uh I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Cancel Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Thank you.